Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley, Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, in the book of liberty and justice.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during final call, publicly invited to be heard, or during the public hearing on any items covered this evening. So now we have the approval of the September 9th regular session. Council member Levison.
Yes, Mayor, there's just one small editorial change. The under council comments, I think that I might have really butchered the name of Athlauter Park, which is, when I was talking about the Indian Peaks 4th grade that was working on that project with the city. So that's the only correction, and I would like to move the minutes for approval.
All right, the minutes have been moved with the spam correction and seconded by Bonnie. Let's vote. Yes. That passes, and for the record, let it be noted that Mayor Protem Brian Bagley is here. Are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, we don't have any additional documents, but we do have an order change, a couple that we would like to see if you would make.
Okay.
Under general business, we'd like to take the 2015 budget presentation first.
Okay.
Rather than the development code changes. And then also, we have some kids from Indian Peaks Elementary here to speak to you and are publicly invited to be heard. If we could take them before the proclamations and then they can go home.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great. All right, why don't we do the publicly invited to be heard first unless, do you want to do your manager's report first?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right. So do we have the sheets for who speaks?
I don't have the sheets yet, but if the students from Indian Peaks want to come down, we'll go ahead and take them.
Okay.
So come on down.
Honorable Mayor Coombs, City Council members, and members of the community.
We are students, we are students from Indian Peaks, Illinois. We have brought our families and teachers to thank the city of Longmont and our local government for giving our school the opportunity to help redesign the Athlauter Park, I mean, the Athlauter Playground.
We are excited to learn how we can make difference in our community through the local government process.
We are gathering data to share with the city park department for the project. Thank you for your time this evening.
Could Mayor Boesner start before you step up to the microphone?
My name is Liliana Sanchez.
My name is Breonna Enriquez.
Thank you.
My name is Orlando Lopez.
My name is Nicholas Clark.
My name is Ariana Vado.
My name, my name is Aldo Lopez.
My name is Michael Rodriguez.
And our teachers here today are Ms. Hannah Thau and Massa Tiri.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, next we've got Liliana Sanchez. Okay, okay, we got that. So I guess we move on to Strider Dunston.
Oh, hey, Strider Dunston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. Greetings, Mayor and Council. As we know, we sort of have a new war going on right now, which I've always fought against war, but this one, I'm giving temporarily qualified support because they really are bad guys, and we have to do something, and I don't have a plan as to what to do. So go along with the program and watch it carefully, and it ought to be debated in Congress. Two days ago was the Greatest Climate March in the history of the world. 400,000 people in New York showed up. We had 200 in Denver and 200 in Boulder. 156 countries produced demonstrations to deal with climate change. The press is suppressing this knowledge, so you can't find out how many people showed up in various places. I think it was 40,000 in London. But the word just came out yesterday, the last six months in succession have been the hottest six months in the history of recorded temperatures in succession per month for each month. July, two months ago, was the hottest month recorded in world history. And we didn't notice it here because, well, what's going on? The climate change has gotten so severe that it has screwed up the polar vortex. All newscasts have misrepresented that the last two years. It's not that now there is a polar vortex. No, there has been one for the last half a billion years. The problem is with climate change, now there's holes in it. So the Arctic air can come down, and we just happened to got lucky this summer in Whirl where the Arctic air hit. Everywhere else on the globe was hotter than ever before. The Rockefeller family announced yesterday they are divesting from the fossil fuel industry. They were the richest family in the world as a result of it, and now they said it is no longer wise nor moral to invest in fossil fuel. Let's wake up and try to save life on this planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that ends publicly invited to be heard. So now we have a proclamation designating October 6, 2014, as Habitat for Humanity Day in Longmont. Katie Burns, the president of the Board for Habitat for Humanity, is here to accept the proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating October 6, 2014, as Habitat for Humanity Day in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas Habitat for Humanity of the St. Brain Valley was founded 25 years ago on October 15, 1988, and whereas Habitat has completed 62 homes and repaired 15 homes in partnership with low-income families in Longmont and the St. Brain Valley, adding more than $9.4 million in assessed property value to Boulder and Weld counties. And whereas Habitat has worked with thousands of local volunteers to build these homes, and whereas Habitat has provided partner families with a nonprofit 0% interest mortgage in order to build more homes in the St. Brain Valley, and whereas Habitat has built over 110 homes in Haiti, Nicaragua, Mexico, Cambodia, Paraguay, and Lesotho. Through its ties to Habitat for Humanity International, and whereas Habitat continues to build homes and transform lives in the St. Brain Valley. Now therefore, I Dennis Alcooms, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim October 6, 2014, as Habitat for Humanity Day in Longmont, and I encourage all cities, all citizens to volunteer for and financially support Habitat for Humanity of the St. Brain Valley and its mission to provide safe, decent, and affordable homes to deserving families in Longmont and the surrounding communities. So would you like to say something?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's actually very exciting to see the expansion that we have been able to accomplish through the hard work and planning of our development committee, our international development committee, who you'll hear from shortly through Ken Schutz. And to see the impact that we have had on our community members that have planned and are participating in our mission trips, and the lives and communities of those citizens that we are helping through our international ministry. And so on behalf of Habitat for Humanity, St. Brain Valley, we would like to thank Mayor Coombs and the City Council for acknowledging and celebrating this important work. And I'll turn it over to Ken, and he'll go into a little bit more details relative to the expansions and what we're serving.
Thank you, Katie.
So, Ken Schutz, 2006 Eagleview Circle, Longmont, Colorado. I am the Chair of the International Development Committee, and we'd like to tonight to present to you the team that is heading to Lesotho next week, to Africa. As you know, we want to take you on just a bit of a transition, just a little tour as well, thinking about what we've been doing. Remember that 90% of the money that you heard Katie talk about serves homes right here, serves citizens right here in our community, and 10%, the tide, is actually committed to international locations, emerging locations. So what we can tell you about that local impact, and you heard it in the proclamation, 62 homes built, 62 homes have been dedicated locally now, 15 homes have been repaired, and 75 families have been served through our Kies program, educating them about how to become the part of that, that, that growing community of people that are making up the middle class for the community. We want to talk about the international impact. Know that we are, are building right here in the St. Brain, but, in the St. Brain Valley, but we have chosen through a community team for international locations, one in each quadrant of the world as Habitat sees it, other than North America where we are building right now. So Paraguay and Latin America, Lesotho in Africa and the Middle East, Cambodia in Asia-Pacific, and Armenia in the, in Central Asia. So from that, as you heard, that, that 10% of money coming into the community has now built 110 homes internationally in those locations. And we are following that money with teams now. You remember that we've brought to you a team that went to Cambodia, came back and reported about that to you. Last fall, we sent a team to Paraguay, and in the spring, we came back and reported to you about that team. And tonight, we'd like to present to you the team that next week, I believe Wednesday, is leaving for Lesotho, Africa. So if you're on that team, would you stand up in the audience? You recognize we just have a few of them here tonight, but there are 17 members of the community going on, on that build. Some of them are actually there already. What you know, you see that says we're building in Lesotho in South Africa. Lesotho has experienced an uprising in their government, and so we're not able to actually get this team into Lesotho right now. It just happened a few weeks ago. So they are going to be building in South Africa, actually in Cape Town, but traveling back to Pretoria where they're actually going to meet with the local Habitat team from Lesotho to build those relationships. So what we also want to tell you is we are already starting to build the team for Armenia in 2015. Maybe it could be one of you that goes with us to Armenia. So thank you again for your support, and we'll continue to do our work, and thank you for doing yours.
Thank you, Karen.
Oh, by the way, one more slide. This brewing market is where we're going to celebrate a World Habitat Day. Brewing Market becomes the headquarters in St. Brain Valley for that, so please stop by the brewing market on that day, and you can send messages to this team that's in Lesotho.
All right, great.
Katie, you'd like to come forward and accept the proclamation.
One, two, three. We'll take one more. One, two, three. Thank you. Mayor Coombs, your next time. This is a special presentation on 2014 Boulder County ballot issues, and Deb Gardner, Boulder County Commissioner, and Joseph Pelley, Boulder County Sheriff is here, as well as Edwina Salazar.
And we have our coroner Emma Hall.
Other people.
Other people. The, thanks everybody for giving us some time this afternoon, this evening, to talk about the county ballot initiatives 1A and 1B. And so we're going to start with Edwina Salazar, who's the Executive Director of the Our Center, to talk about 1B, and then I'll kick off 1A, and Emma and Joe can talk a little bit about that, too.
Good evening, City Councilor Mayor Coombs. I'm Edwina Salazar at 303 Atwood. I'm the Executive Director of the Our Center. I'm here tonight to urge your endorsement of 1B, the extension of the Boulder County Safety Net Tax. The recession stretched the Our Center's resources severely. Grants and foundation giving shrunk as the need expanded. Without the safety tax resources, we would have seen individual and family homelessness overwhelm this community. Instead, the Our Center, with the help of the Boulder County Tax, was able to reduce motel sheltering of families by 75% during that three-year period. We also benefited in the community with other, other of the funds. The homeless fund, the homeless pension fund was called the Housing Stabilization Services, and an estimated 613 families were helped by that between 2011 and 2014. And the investment was about $92,000. We also were able to provide other services like benefits acquisition and other basic needs, and a total of 3,153 families were helped by that with an investment of $330,000. The Our Center also had a counselor in place in partnership with the Mental Health Partners, and was paid through the tax, and we were And we were able to help 533 individuals with an investment of $329,000. In addition to that, there were domestic violence services provided to 81 people from Longmont with an investment of $99,000. There was parenting education, which, of course, is a basic prevention for people in stress, and we were able to help 298 Longmont families with that with an investment of $144,000. Our Center has two programs. One is Basic Needs, and of course, the Housing Stabilization Program was one of those programs. But we also have our Aspen Center. And through the Child Care Assistance Program, of which the Our Center is, the Aspen Center is one of the recipients of that, 669 families in Longmont were assisted, and the average investment in Longmont was $434,000. However, the Housing and Human Services in Boulder County was able to leverage another $2,257,000 with that, with those funds from the TSN. Now, in addition to that, by leveraging those CCAP funds, families were going, able to go back to work quicker. Families that could find jobs during the recession, needed childcare, didn't have to wait in long waiting lists. They were able to, pretty quickly, once they found a job and they qualified for the program, they were able to get authorized in the program because of the leveraging of funds through the Boulder County TSN. The Aspen Center was recipients of that benefit because we were able to help many of those families at our childcare center, but it also assisted the center and the folks who are administering the program at our end, because they didn't have to spend extraordinary amounts of time trying to work people through a waiting list. I also want to say that because we were all working in partnership and collaboration, we were able then, when the flood hit, to actually utilize that background and those relationships we had that were brought together through the Temporary Safety Net Tax to continue our partnership and to strengthen our partnership and to come together and address the needs during the flood recovery. And I'm urging you to endorse it because of our severe affordable housing needs. If we can keep families in their homes through this Housing Stabilization Program, we will save the community money. We were able to show the proof of the program in reducing the sheltering program. We will be able to continue that through the Housing Stabilization Program and the continuing funding of the tax. So again, I urge you to endorse the program. It has been very effective, and frankly, I'm not sure what we would do without it at this point in keeping people in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwina.
Thanks, Edwina. And now to introduce County Issue 1A. We have Sheriff Joe Pelly and our Coroner, Emma Hall.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpeople, Councilpersons. We went through, as you did, obviously, together, a historic and unprecedented event last year with the floods that we had. I gave you a project timesheet and a timeline and an expense sheet on our projected costs. It's projected that the county is going to spend $217 million on recovery, response on recovery. We're projecting that we're going to recover approximately $161 million of that from state and federal government sources. That leaves Boulder County with a $56 million funding gap. That is a huge gap. That is more than belt tightening will fix. I have two concerns. One concern is continuing to be able to provide services as a county department and a county agency facing those sort of budget issues. And the second concern I have is this. As the County Sheriff, I am the fire warden for the county, and I'm responsible for coordinating search and rescue and emergency management of Boulder County. The funds that I need when times call for it to do things like contract for slurry bombers and hotshot crews and incident management teams and logistics and support for all of those huge events comes from the county general fund reserves. Those general fund reserves are being depleted, and I have an enormous concern about our ability to be ready to respond to the next major incident in Boulder County. I've been the sheriff in Boulder County for 12 years now, and in that 12-year period of time, I've had seven of those large fires where I've had to call in federal and state resources. The county has to pay for that upfront and seek reimbursement later in order to make those payments. So we are proposing a temporary, a five-year sales tax of .185%. That's less than two cents on a $10 purchase. The money will be dedicated to flood recovery and emergency preparedness so that we're ready for the next wildfire, the next major event in our county. None of us take asking for a tax increase lightly. However, as I said before, this is an unprecedented and historic event, and we're asking the community to dig a little deeper and help us on a temporary basis to get through this and continue to be able to provide the services that people in Boulder County have grown accustomed to receive. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Emma Hall, Boulder County Coroner, 3362 Larkspur. My perspective on the flood is, I guess, from my professional perspective, we were very lucky that we didn't have a mass fatality situation. My office was very prepared for that. I happened to be on my first vacation since taking office in Hawaii when Joe called me to tell me about the flood. And of course, my first concern was how many bodies. In 1976, there was hundreds of bodies and hundreds of people killed and missing in the Little Thompson Flood. So I was really expecting the same type of situation here in Boulder County. From my personal perspective, I'm a native of Lyons. I grew up in Lyons. I lived in Lyons up until just after the flood last year. I'm now a Longmont resident. So I have a very personal perspective of what happened and how much damage has been done to our county and our community. And coupled with that, being a department head in the county and always having to make sure that we have enough funds to operate our office, I am certainly concerned about what will happen to the county and our budgets and our departments if we do not do something like this tax initiative to make up that 12.5% that the county of Boulder does have to pay. So I also am urging all of you to really look hard at supporting this. I think that we have to do something in order to pay for these things. I am very grateful to Joe and his staff and all of the great work they did and all of the years of planning that have gone into being prepared for a situation like this, and that the ultimate outcome, especially for my office, was that we didn't end up with a huge mass fatality. But there's always, at some point, something will happen in Boulder County, and that will be even a greater expense to the county is if we have a mass fatality. So while it is expensive for the emergency management part of things, it could be even more expensive in the future. And that's really what we need to be prepared for, is the next situation. And this is so unpredictable, we don't know when, we don't know how soon we need to be prepared, but if we don't do something in the short term and we build our funds, then we won't have the money to respond like we did in this event. So again, I just urge you guys to look at this and support it for us.
Thanks, thanks, Emma, and Joe, and Edwina. And I'll just wrap it up by saying that, you know, I think one of the things, at least for me, through this experience, was the degree of partnership that we were able to have in terms of our response to the flood. And I know it goes on daily. There's, you know, Harold is calling me with questions about permits, and Sandy's in meetings, and Sean's in meetings about how do we allocate the, hopefully, CDBG funds that we get, and that, the, and I feel very proud about that, and very good about us as a community and how we've been able to work together, I think, to make the people in Longmont safer and be able to help them recover from the flood and prevent future events that I know we're all working hard to not have to endure. So again, we'd like your support on 1A and 1B, and I'm not quite sure what form that would take here this evening. And again, I guess, if you have any questions, I think we might be out of time, but.
Mayor Combs, members of council, you may notice in your council communication that the commissioners are asking for support on these two ballot initiatives. You have a couple of choices. You can either have that conversation now if you'd like to, and make a motion and do so. If you do, that's your official position, and then they can take that tonight. Or you can move to have me come back with a resolution in two to three weeks, which may be a little later, considering where the elections are, so. Or you could choose not to take the position tonight. It's completely up to you at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm not ready to make any decisions this evening because I still need a little bit more breakdown regarding 1A. This isn't, you know, when we went to the ballot measure for bonding, 20 million, you know, $20 million, we gave a little bit more specifics regarding projects. You know, I still have some questions, and Emma, I talked to Emma yesterday.
I mean, we have, I pulled, I summarized these for this presentation and others, and we have detailed lists, there's behind each of these, and be happy to get to that.
And I think that would be beneficial for not only the members of council, but for, you know, the public as well. We're talking a tax initiative, we bonded, and I guess that's one of my questions, is why didn't the county go out to bond? You know, we bonded $20 million. I mean, we're, not only, we asked our residents to allow us the capability to bond, you know, we're, now we're asking, we're going to be, if we endorse this, asking our residents to, that already were hit in the flood, to be taxed in an additional .185 on purchases. And I understand, you know, the, you know, the potential need, but, you know, what all, how many of these projects are going to be beneficial to the residents of Longmont that, you know, that also use, you know, county services as well? But, you know, there needs to be a little bit more specifics in this than just this diagram.
We'd be happy to present that.
And I guess, you know, is it a designated fund?
Absolutely. You know, I think, I presume it's the same with the city, that whenever you go out with a tax initiative, that you'll have a designated fund that all that money will go into, and those projects, again, painfully, as we know, as we're working through our project worksheets with FEMA and others, that there'll be very specific expenditures that will come under every project, and you'll be able to see all that specifically by project, so that, again, we can get that accounting at the end when we're able to, you know, have the final audit with all of those. And so for that process, then, we'll be keeping track of it. Obviously, when we spend money on roads and bridges, we need to transfer money into the Road and Bridge Fund because that's the only place we can spend that money. But again, they'll be project-specific because of that reimbursement that we're looking for.
And I guess, what percentage of the 49.6% is going to go to the, I guess, the Future Disasters and Emergency Situations Fund?
You know, there isn't, that's not, this is to fill the gap, and which would mean that we would be able to keep the reserve that we have traditionally had, which is about 24 million or two months' worth of operating. So none of this money.
Well, that needs to be a little bit more clear. I mean, it was, and it says in our council communication, in addition, these funds would ensure that, but I guess it needs to be a little bit more clear.
I have a question for you. Basically, if you don't have this money, then you can't leverage, I mean, you have to have the matching money to get both the FEMA money and the state money. So it's like, I view it as an investment, that by putting money into this, we get a lot more money out. And I see a lot of things on this list that a lot of Longmont residents use. I mean, I go up left-hand, Kenny, I use these roads. I'd be glad to, I mean, we're talking 18.5 cents on a $100 purchase. I know personally how I'm going to vote on both these items.
So Councilmember, David.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. While I, while I agree with my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Santos, on being cautious and wanting details, I've had the chance to think about it. I'm going to be supportive of this.
Thank you.
The, my first reaction when anybody comes and says we want to increase taxes, you know, politically, culturally, I cringe. You know, my default is absolutely not. However, you know, we had the same exact discussion here as a city. You know, all government entities have, we have to come up with 12.5%. Our solution was we bonded out, but we didn't raise taxes, we just increased fees. So I mean, I mean, so I mean, I applaud you for, I mean, I applaud you, but you don't have the means to really raise fees like we did. You got to take it to the ballot and ask the people to pay that .185 tax. So, you know, having gone through the same, you know, process just a few months ago in order to come up with 12.5% of a huge funding gap, I don't know what to do, I mean, I don't know what else you can do other than increase fees or raise taxes. And so I'm supportive, I'm ready to, I'd vote for that tonight. But at the same time, if my fellow council members aren't ready to take that vote tonight and they want more information, I won't make that motion. But if it's made and we decide to vote, I will vote in support of 1A. Also, the other thing is that it sunsets in five years.
Yes.
And that it can't be extended without another vote of the people.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so that, that also makes me, you know, cringe less. And so, you know, we need, we need services, we're part of the county, and regardless of whether Boulder gets a little bit more, or the roads towards Longmont gets a little bit more, this is something where we're, we're all in it together. And we, our city got our fix, and we're part of the county, our county needs the fix. So I'll be supporting 1A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to state exactly what Councilmember Van Gogh stated, that we didn't go to the vote of the people. In some ways, you guys have more transparency having to go to a vote than we did. We just raised fees. And when we raised fees, you know, we put a, you know, an idea of a sunset on them, but we'd raised fees before and had a sunset clause and continued them. So I think this is a little bit more trans, well, a lot more transparent. So I will be supporting 1A. And as far as 1B, the length of time of the property tax is pretty long. And there is some concern, and we've talked about it on council, with every time, and we're going for, you know, 10 years on our street tax renewal, every time you add that length of time on, it narrows your possibility of what your, the absolute top tax that people will pay, and in some regards, ties people's hands in the future for other needs that might be just as critical as the needs we have today. So why did you choose 15 years as opposed to the 10-year or a 5-year?
Well, I think it was a combination of two factors. One, that we really didn't see anything that indicated the need would diminish in the relative short term of 15 years. But we also did, I'll be frank, we did polling, and there really was no difference in terms of how the length of time was perceived by the general public. And so it felt like because of the fact that there wasn't any good indicator that said, oh, we won't need this anymore after 10 years, then we decided to go with 15.
And in this situation, it's a property tax, and in some regards, you know, property tax is less regressive on the very people that this tax intends to help serve as a safety net as opposed to it being a sales tax. I find that to be, you know, a benefit. The other thing I want to point out to council members is that Boulder County had some very high kudos in the national media. I think it was, I don't know if it was high kudos in the national media, I think it was, I don't know if it was Sixty Minutes or one of the other investigative shows, that talked about the recession and.
It was on Frontline.
Was it Frontline, PBS Frontline? And they really looked at how the judicious use of the safety net both kept people on their feet, but also cut people off before they became dependent entirely on the safety net. So I think the judicious application of the money that was had the first time has demonstrated the, the use of the program is very focused. So I appreciate the way you've used the money in the past. I would be comfortable moving both these items forward for a vote tonight. If we delay and wait another two weeks, the effectiveness of our support for these issues is really diminished. And I think that if we're going to, I'm certainly thinking that we're going to rebenefit for our community out of both. And I guess everyone asks me about the Sunset Bridge. If the flood recovery and sales and use tax does not pass, will that jeopardize Sunset Bridge project?
The, no, I think, I think your manager can answer that question.
No, that is something we're partnering on. There are federal highway funds that have been allocated for that, so that's going to be the primary funding source on that. I think one of the unique pieces in the federal highway funds is that you can have a match of twenty percent, or it can be a hundred percent paid for, and it differs based on what the structure is and what the project is. And I think that we're trying to understand. Dale may know the answer to that question more specifically. Is that one a hundred or twenty match? Yeah, so, okay, so there's still a local match on that one. But the majority of funding is from the Federal Highway Administration.
We're splitting that.
We're splitting that match.
But I'm also looking down the lists of Longmont Dam Road, you know, getting, getting places that people in Longmont like to go up in the mountains. And, you know, it cuts down your quality of life. If you can't go somewhere in Boulder County, it might have been a favorite hike, or picnic place, or a gathering, or just the kind of traditional family drive on a Sunday afternoon in the fall, not to be able to move forward with those projects really diminishes quality of life for all of us in the county. And I think we've all been in this together. I know that we have a lot of mutual aid agreements and response teams put together, and I think this is just another part of that big puzzle, and we can't just always stand alone. We have to work with other levels of government. So I would like to move that we support the flood recovery, sales and use tax, County Issue 1A.
Okay, that's been moved in second. Councilmember Christensen.
Well, I agree with what the mayor and councilmembers Santos and Bagley and Levison have already said. I, despite the fact that we don't agree, but I do feel like it's, there is ample information out there, and I'm familiar enough with it to be supportive of it now. I think it's important for us to support it as early as possible, because we have so many needs coming up, that I would like to see that done tonight if it's possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just to clarify, in my mind, 1B is just an extension of existing program, same tax rate, same fund balance, goes to same fund balance, same uses, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll go back to 1A. I do also share some of the, of Councilman Santos's concerns about what is actually being funded, because we have fifty-eight million dollars of other categorized, which is a quarter of the full need, looks like, two-seventeen divided by fifty-eight million. So that, breaking that out would probably be helpful.
I have that information, so I'd be happy to share it with you.
And I do, however, think that what projects are listed there are necessary for the county to recover from the flooding. It's not only convenience for residents, but social commerce throughout the county. We need to be able to have also reasonable and efficient emergency response. So for those reasons, I will be supporting it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think just because I'm questioning means I wasn't in support. I'm just asking for a courtesy just to get some information before we vote. If this vote were to happen, I would have to almost assume that I would vote no. I'm just asking for a courtesy just to get some more information before we take a vote. I'm in favor of 1B, because it's just an extension. But just because we're going to go ahead and push this, I think a unified seven-zero vote would be more important than just having a six-to-one vote. I'm just asking for a courtesy. But if you're going to go ahead and make this vote, I would vote no. I'm just asking for just a little bit more information. As Councilmember Moore pointed out, there's a whole bunch of other that just, it just says "other."
And I can give you generally what that is. I mean, trying to keep this to one page, then I lump together the larger, larger road and bridge projects mostly, and over fifty percent of what were the two-hundred-and-seventeen million is all going to be road and bridge projects. So there were a lot of them that were under three-hundred thousand dollars, and I aggregated them together. And that's the vast majority of it.
Right, and I get that, but we have voted on ballot measures with a little bit more information and other things than, that have been presented to us than what we have here. I'm just, was just asking for just a little bit more information. But if this vote were to go forward, I would vote no, because in my good conscience, I could not tell a voter what is in here, except for saying, "Here, this is what's being voted on." You know, two weeks, I don't think it's going to hurt anybody. And if it does, then, again, I would rather have a seven-zero vote than a six-to-one vote. And again, I'm not, I would more likely be in favor of this, just for, just for a little bit more information.
Well, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, so I guess we have to vote. So we're voting on 1A. Councilmember Bagley?
I guess, what, I mean, what would it hurt if we waited two weeks?
Well, I think there is some momentum that needs to be building around, there is a campaign for both of these, 1A and 1B. There's campaign committees put together. Obviously, we're looking for endorsements and resolutions. I think at this point, every council that we've been to, we've been successful. And the, and so I think we're trying to build that campaign and get the word out to the public ahead of when the ballots drop, which will be October fourteenth.
And I got the same question for Coroner Hall and Sheriff Pelly. I mean, I'm inclined to, I mean, whenever a council member asks for courtesy, I want to give it to them. So what are your, what are your thoughts?
So, there are, there's reams of documentation around what lies ahead, the expenses, the roads, the bridges, the culverts, there's so much work to do, and there's stacks of paperwork. We were given twenty minutes to give a presentation for both of these. We came up with a summary and a timeline that we thought hit all the high points, pulled together the vast majority of the information. This is based on huge files of information and data concerning all of the projects that lie ahead of us. And I think, moreover, just take a drive-up lifting candy to go to Jamestown. That's all you got to do. And the questions are answered, I think, in regards to what lies ahead of us.
I certainly appreciate Councilmember Santos's concern over not enough detail. This obviously is, you know, leaves a lot to consider under the other. There's just so much, you know, I kind of talked about my perspective as the coroner, but I think we all kind of live in our own little personal bubbles, and my bubble seems to be around my, my native community of Lyons, my current community of Longmont, and my office in the coroner's office. But yet, when I go to these other meetings throughout the county, and I hear about how each department has been affected by the flood, there are things that I just never even think about. So that's why there's so many things that need to be taken care of. You know, and it's just things that you're not necessarily going to think are going to be affected, but yet they're being affected more than some of the departments that you think are, that you would automatically think are being affected. So I certainly understand the concern, and I think that the commissioners definitely have a lot more detailed information they can send. I think part of the issue right now is that time is of the essence, just because we are that close to the election, and ballots come out so early, so, you know, it's really your choice as.
Thank you. Very politically spoken, thank you. And then I guess the other thing, and I guess before we vote, the other thought I had is, and this is for Commissioner Gardner, I guess the, should I run again? Who knows? But there's a phrase in here, "Reducing the impact on low-income and other residents, especially impacted by the flood." I would hope that that phrase is truly, I mean, I just hope, the reason I'm endorsing this is truly because we need to have, you know, that, we need to rebuild, and we need to cover that gap. I would hope that this wasn't used in the future, regardless of what information you provide us or Councilmember Santos, for, you know, other welfare programs that were not flood-related. I would encourage you to do that through another ballot initiative.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded. Would you like, let's vote. Okay, that passes six-to-one. Councilmember Santos descending. Councilmember Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to go ahead and have us endorse County Issue 1B as well.
Any further discussions, or let's go ahead and vote on that? Okay, that passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Councilmember Coombs. And if there's other ballot issues that come up, I would hope that we get more than several weeks before ballots are dropped, so we can have a little bit more discussion if there's more information, so we could ask for that information. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, we're ready for a second reading.
Okay.
First item is ordinance two thousand fourteen forty-nine, a bill for an ordinance approving vested rights in a development agreement for the Twin Peaks Mall subdivision, generally located east of Hoover Street and south of Nelson Road and north of Ken Pratt Boulevard. And we do not have a staff presentation on this, but Ava Pachewski is here in case you have questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions before we open this up for public hearing? Okay, we'll now open ordinance two thousand fourteen dash forty-nine to the public. Is there any of the public that would like to speak on this ordinance? Well, first off.
Yes.
I could close the public hearing first.
Okay.
Single one, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay.
Councilmember Christensen.
Okay, I'm a little confused, because it seems to me that there is the potential for a three-year vesting period, up to three? I'm confused about why there would be a need to extend it to five. But am I misreading the?
I think if you, in the minutes of the planning and zoning, they kind of covered that same question.
Oh, all right, okay. I do understand about the, the need for people at the front, the most visible part of it, and that may take extra time, right? Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move ordinance two thousand fourteen dash forty-nine.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Santos. Let's vote. Okay, here we go. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a nine, one thousand nine hundred forty-nine square foot electrical easement on Lot One, Horizon Parkway, Replant F, generally located south of Christman Drive and west of Main Street. Again, we do not have a formal staff presentation. I believe Ben Ortiz is here to address questions.
Okay, we've got a question from Councilmember Levison.
I just have one question that, this just happens to come on the night that we're reviewing the part of the land development code that talked about easements. Did we actually pay for this easement? Because the land, the section of the land development code revamped that I was reading talked about the city, if it purchases an easement, then we release the easement, that we would get reimbursed for the cost of our original purchase?
Mayor, Councilmember Levison, regrettably, I don't have an answer for that. I know that it is one that, I beg your pardon, I know that it is an easement that the city has used and was granted to them, but has since been abandoned. Currently, they have electrical easements around the entire perimeter of the property that are being used instead of this particular piece.
But the code, actually, the code calls out that if we paid for it, that if we released the easement, we would get reimbursed. And so, am I going to assume that we never paid for it, and otherwise we would be getting reimbursed? That's my assumption. So are we due money or not?
Mayor, Councilmember Levison, I don't have an answer. I don't have the answer. I apologize.
Okay, I guess I wrap this up for public hearing. Is there any public that would like to speak on ordinance two thousand fourteen dash fifty? I guess, single one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance two thousand fourteen dash fifty. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move ordinance two thousand fourteen dash fifty.
Second. Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is your consent agenda. First item, nine A, is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty-one, bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand fourteen. Public hearing and second reading of this is scheduled for October fourteenth. Nine B is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty-two, approving the disconnection of a portion of the Bachmann Annexation from the city of Longmont, generally located on County Road Twenty and a Half, east of County Line Road. Public hearing is scheduled for October fourteenth. Item nine C is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty-three, amending section fifteen, point oh five, point oh eight oh of the Longmont Municipal Code on Off-Street Parking and Loading. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for October fourteenth. Item nine D is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty-four, amending section fifteen, point oh five, point one four oh of the Longmont Municipal Code on Outdoor Lighting. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for October fourteenth. Item nine E one is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty-five, authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vans Bram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel A thirty-two A premises to Dean Hollenbach, the tenant. And item nine E two is ordinance two thousand fourteen fifty-six, authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vans Bram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H twenty-seven to De Plane LLC, the tenant. Both of these ordinances, the public hearing is scheduled for October fourteenth. Item nine F is Resolution two thousand fourteen eighty-three, authorizing a loan from fund balance in the city's fleet fund to the DDA Arts and Entertainment Fund and providing for repayment of the loan from the DDA Tax Annuity Fund. Item nine G is Resolution two thousand fourteen eighty-four, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city, the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, Boulder County, and the city of Boulder for funding a major drainageway planning for Boulder Creek. Item nine H is Resolution two thousand fourteen eighty-six, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado Department of Public Safety for a grant to prevent child sexual abuse. Item nine I is Resolution two thousand fourteen eighty-seven, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado Department of Public Safety for a grant to provide assistance to victims of domestic violence. And finally, item nine J is Resolution two thousand fourteen eighty-eight, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Boulder Regional Emergency Telephone Service Authority for a funding agreement. Staff does not have any items that we need to pull.
Councilmember Moore? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move the consent agenda. I'd like to actually pull item nine D.
D as in boy?
No, D as in David.
D as in David, all right, thank you.
Yeah. So, Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd also like to pull 9C for a couple of quick questions.
Do you like to rebuttal your question? I move the consent agenda, less items C and D.
Second.
Okay, let's go down that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Okay, and item 9C is the off-street parking and loading changes to the development code. Phil Greenwell is here to address your questions.
Councilmember Bagley?
I guess the, what comes to mind is just, I'm curious as to, so before it was a minimum requirement, and now we're going to go to a maximum requirement? So, my question is, I understand your explanation here, but my question is still why? So, why are we regulating something? Do we have a reason as to why we're regulating it?
Mayor and Councilmember Bagley, Phil Greenwell, Transportation Planner with the City of Longmont's Planning and Development Services Department. Just to answer your question, the reason that we're, we already have a maximum in place, and we have a minimum in place, so we have a bracket.
Yeah.
And what we're doing is we're eliminating for non-residential properties only, we're eliminating that minimum standard because we really don't have a, we don't have trouble meeting that minimum standard. It's the too much parking for those non-residential uses.
Got it. So we're basically cutting regulation in half.
Right.
Great, I'm all for that. Then with that, I move that we pass 9C.
I had a question, too.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The only question I had was in, in our explanation, number three, it says rethink drive-through uses. That particular sentence bothers me because I know that ordinances have actually done away with, in other cities, have done away with drive-throughs, and it has hurt some businesses, so I want to make sure that's not our intent.
Mayor and Councilmember Finley, again, this is just to rethink the way, it is worded in a strange way, I agree with you. We're not rethinking the uses, we're rethinking the way that drive-throughs are measured.
Okay, I'll take away my fast food, I heard you. Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero. So, my question on ordinance 2014-54 for the outdoor lighting, you know, when I was at National League of Cities, I went to a big session on the LED lighting that a lot of cities are rolling out, and they showed what Los Angeles looked like from up on a bluff before they put in the new LED lighting, and you had all this night lighting that just lit up the whole sky, then they put in this LED lighting, which actually illuminated where you want down on the ground, but the night sky was so much darker. I'm just thinking, is there a way to incorporate some of that light pollution into our codes? Not necessarily in this one, but in the future. I think we need to be thinking along the same terms of making the sky darker while still providing great lighting for drive-throughs and ATMs and businesses and all that. You know, I think the technology has just really improved on controlling light, so I just wanted to see if the planning and zoning is thinking along those same lines for future codes.
Mayor Coombs, Don Burchett with the Planning Development Services Division. The industry itself right now, and the applications that we see, just about every light fixture that they use anymore are the LED. We do allow the LED as well as some of the other types of bulbs to light up areas, and we do believe that that is where the industry itself is just heading, from a standpoint of quality of light, all the way to the length of the light lasting, so a cost benefit to the businesses. So, I think we're going to see more of that incorporated. We did not make that a requirement. We still allow for other types of light bulbs to be used in fixtures, but I do think that's where it will ultimately head. So we have looked at that, and the one thing that we do have in our regulations currently and that we intend to keep is the requirement for a full cutoff light fixture that will again help reduce that night sky glow that you see with any of the uplighting and things like that that come from fixtures that are not full cutoff.
I think you're right. I think the technology and the costs and the, how long, the long life and the fact you don't have to have all the maintenance of changing out light bulbs is going to fix the problem itself without regulation, so being on board with the Brian, with Councilmember Bagley, if you don't need a regulation, that technology's going to take care of it, which it probably will, then I'm in favor of this. Councilwoman Christensen?
I noticed that the city in the last few years has done a lot about shielding light, and that really helps a lot with light pollution. Our neighborhood is still wee to light, but I'm wondering if the city can do something about publicizing porch lights, because a lot of neighbors seem to think that a bare light bulb that shines at 300, you know, watts is a good idea, and it just shines directly into my window and things like that. And if there was something in the city line, I think that might help, is to get people to consider their front porch light, which should be directed toward the walk, not towards the skying and everything else in general. But I do, I wanted to thank you for the work the city has done with shielding the lights because they were previously really harmful. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Levinson?
I don't think we have any chance of becoming a real dark skies community. I don't even, I don't think there's a dark sky community on the Front Range. I think only a couple on the Western Slope might be true dark sky communities. One of the other, so while I appreciate the mayor's comments supporting the dark sky trend, it's, you know, we have so much ambient pollution from Denver that it doesn't, doesn't matter, you can't put a telescope up and, and see anything real anyway with as much light pollution as we have. The other part of the code, though, I think that people might be lulled into thinking that increased lighting levels for gas stations or bank drive-throughs is really the fallacy that more light is actually safer, because I know from previous examinations of light code in other communities that, in fact, you're not, it doesn't automatically mean you're safer, because somebody who's standing in the pool outside the sphere of the light is basically unseen, becomes invisible. And so, it's not a panacea for security, and I guess I want to make sure that we're not lulling people into the complacency that if you just have a huge amount of light at the gas station, that it's going to deter somebody who comes in from the outside of the sphere of light and does something and gets out quicker, because it's just not relevant. I don't know if that's really what people are thinking, that it's more safe to have that increased light at that one point.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, I think it gets back to some of the questions that Councilmember Christensen brought up with whether or not a property is well-lit and whether it is done in a way that actually meets the code. A well-lit site would be an evenly lit site. The code does require that in our standards. It does require the shielding, and it speaks more to the issue of what is the safety needs of a person who is trying to use an ATM, fill their car up at a gas station to make sure that it's lit at a high enough level that they can see and do that, do that safely. And the lighting book that I've got, which is larger, I think, than the New York phone book from the Illuminating Engineering Society, talks about a number of things that I think are important to understand. First is that they look at it from a standpoint of what is your age range of the people that are going to be going to these areas? And they break it down to a younger population, 18 to zero. They do a middle population, which is an 18 to 65, and then they do a 65-plus. So if I'm in Sun City, Arizona, and I'm trying to light a gas station, my population is definitely up in the 65-plus range, whereas Longmont is more of a city that has a median age somewhere in between the 18 and 65. So it breaks that down based on the visual ability of the people that typically occupy an area to make sure that it's safe. We chose an area that we believe, based on the science that they have in their research, to say that our population fits a certain range, the type of activity area that these are going to be located in are going to be high-activity areas, and we chose that number based on those parameters. And from what we have seen and looking at other communities along the Front Range of what they have set theirs at, we are within that spectrum that we are seeing along the Front Range as appropriate for those kind of areas to be lit. So, is it possible someone could be hiding in a dark area?
Yes.
It, that's always possible, but I don't know when you balance safety for the occupant and then the well-being of the neighbor who is being impacted, you've got to find that fine line when we think that this is where it should be.
Well, I guess the, the one thing that I always found the most glaring was coming up I-25, when you hit that one area of Colorado Springs, and there is so much light at the car lots. It is almost distracting, being on the highway, which is actually darker, and the ambient light from all that distracting you, and you can't see as well. Because all of that light from the outside of where the highway is, is totally distracting, and it's also, you know, closing down your pupils, and yet you're looking at a dark roadway. So it's those kind of contrasts also, where that might be a great use for that car dealer to feel secure, but it's really doing damage to the roadway travelers, too. So that's the kind of egregious lighting that I hope this code would not support.
It would not, and that part of what you're talking about is glare, which is a little bit different than the foot candle level. A light that's shining out, even 100-watt light bulb on your neighbor's house can produce a glare that impacts your ability to see more than a 250-watt light that's directed straight down that's not shining into your eyes would have. So, you can light a property well at a lower level and have it be safer than one that has the car lot kind of intense lighting that, as you say, could physically cause you not to see well as you're leaving and get into an accident, not see that pedestrian that's walking on the sidewalk as you're leaving that site. And so, our goal is to make sure a site's evenly lit, it's well-lit in those areas where it needs to be for safety, but that it meets the needs of not only our residents, but also those businesses that feel that they have some liability by not having it well-lit.
You know, one thing that I learned at this LED seminar that I took in Seattle, Washington, was the, they were even surprised when they went into neighborhoods and they put in this LED lighting, that crime went down 15%. And basically, the LED lighting puts out 500-degree Kelvin temperatures, so it doesn't, it's like moonlight, doesn't distort colors like the other lighting, and it's more even, and you have less shadows, and so they were actually surprised that they, it actually cut crime by 15%. So, anyway, with that said, I would like to move ordinance 2014-54.
Right.
Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, with council's approval, we'd like to have the 2015 budget presentations as the first settlement of general business.
Can we take a, a minute recess first?
No.
Yeah. All right. All right.
Yeah, ten. One topic.
All right.
We have to play rock, paper, scissors.
No, she has the money. Did Trish know? Did she? I'm just kidding.
Go ahead and do a budget presentation.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Trish Moy, Budget Manager. And this evening, we really only have one topic under our 2015 budget presentation for you, and that's our financial policies. So each year, staff reviews and then updates our financial policies, and then we bring that to City Council as part of our budget process. These financial policies are then adopted by resolution, and that is currently scheduled for October 28th. They then become effective January 1 of the following year. The complete list of financial policies was included in the attachment for you. And I do want to point out that the way that we presented them to you is to strike out words and phrases that we're proposing to strike from the policy, and then in bold will be new words and phrases that we're proposing to add to the policies. There's also quite a few financial policies where you will see the words to be updated after the 2015 budget is completed. And so those are basically statements about dollars that are in relation to policies, dollars in our 2015 budget. So once that budget is finalized by you all, those amounts will get updated for you. So many of the proposed changes that are in the attachment are really just clarification or minor wordsmithing, I would say. I do want to, though, highlight four policies for you this evening, because I think they really do go beyond just clarification or basic wordsmithing. And so the first one is our sales and use tax allocation between the General Fund and the Public Improvement Fund. So we've spoken to you about this in a couple of the prior meetings. And in our 2015 proposed budget, the allocation of sales tax between those two funds is set at 87.7 to the General Fund and 12.3 to the Public Improvement Fund. So this policy is just being updated to reflect that. The second policy is the General Improvement District Fund, and this is just some clarification to reflect our current practice. So we are proposing that we strike the word "will," so the city "will," and replace that with "may" at the request of the DDA. So again, just clarifying and updating the policy to reflect our current practice. The third one is our General Fund Reserve. So Jim went through this with you last week. I guess the comment that I would make is the numbers that we actually put in the proposed, or I'm sorry, in our financial policies are based on our 2014 adopted budget. What Jim gave you last week was both our 2014 adopted budget as well as our 2015 proposed budget. And I guess I just want to point out that what actually goes in our policies is reflected, the numbers are reflected from our most recent adopted budget. And then the final one is a new policy that we're proposing. And I do need to tell you that what was actually in the council communication is not the policy. It's been updated. That was a prior version. So, but the policy in the actual attachment is correct, so I'm going to read that one to you. So again, the Parks and Greenway Maintenance Fund. The Park and Greenway Maintenance Fund will receive revenues from payments of the park and greenway maintenance fee. These revenues will be used to maintain, operate, repair, and renew city-owned parks, greenways, and pools. So that's our new proposed policy. So that is all of the policies that I was going to highlight this evening. Certainly, if you have questions on any of the policies that were in that attachment, we'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions? Time for Senator Levinson.
Thank you. I'm looking at page 548 of the, and 552 of the electronic packet. It says investment and debt policies. Are we missing a year because it says, it lists all these years, and then it says 2011, and then the word "and" is bolded, and then it says 2012, and then it says "and 2013" is crossed out. Should we have 2014 in there? Or was that just, it's page 548 of the electronic?
Unfortunately, I don't have a copy that's got page numbers on it.
I don't know what it is. Yeah.
Do we have data in 2014?
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering whether or not we should have 2014 in there. It just seems like you crossed out the most current year to this one and put an "and" in a place that seems strange.
And so we can certainly verify that for you, Councilmember Levinson, but I believe that in 2013, that really should have been 2012, not 13.
But it was not 12, I guess then we must have made an error by including both 12 and 13.
And so I think, and again, I will verify this for you, I think 2012 should have been in bold for you.
Ah, okay. So the word "and," 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 and also, the 2014 should have been bolded. Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, excuse me, 2012 should have been bolded. Correct, okay. But I will verify that.
I'm just trying to see. Okay, I think that, I think that I'll let somebody else get on, because I might have one other one I highlighted.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I did have a question about obsolete items. Items in the warehouse inventory that have not moved in two years unless designated for use by departments will be declared obsolete and discarded. Couldn't we sell them?
Mayor and councilmembers, we do. Our obsolete items go to auction. Perhaps we can update that policy to reflect that. We will do that.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. What, just out of curiosity, on page 541, Park and Greenway Maintenance Fund, I noticed we don't use an Oxford comma. What is our policy on the Oxford comma? I'm just kidding, I don't care, really. It's red, white, red, white, and blue. Do we use a comma after white?
Do our grade teachers left the room?
No, I just noticed that we don't use it, and so I thought I could add for some confusion in the future. But anyway, in all seriousness, the reason, I want to go back to page 547. We talked about this last week, employee pay, and I've had some conversations with city employees, city staff, as well as council members. And my question is, so it says here, "The city of Longmont will strive to establish prevailing market ranges of pay for city positions." What does that mean exactly?
So I'm going to let Bobby, can you come down and answer that question for you?
Thanks. And I know you're thinking, you're beating a dead horse, you're beating a dead horse. I just want to, I just want to understand, because that's not what I thought it was.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor of Council, Mayor Proton Bagley. Prevailing ranges of pay means market competitive pay for each position. What is the market paying for that particular job?
Okay, so it says prevailing market ranges. Is there currently a range, or are we targeting the midpoint for everybody?
Our proposed range is 90 to 110 off that midpoint.
Okay, off the midpoint. So in conversations that we've had in the past, are we good?
The market is paying 90% of employees that are being paid through 90 and 110 of that particular range, so we are good from 90 to 110.
Okay, is there, in your opinion, in your, yeah, my question is, in your opinion, is there any adjustments that we should be thinking about as a city council? Or are we doing it right? I know you've been doing this for a long time, so my question is, city management, I mean, right now, the city, I guess what I'm saying is, in the past, city council has set policy on how employees should be paid. And so now that you've been doing this for a couple of years, you've been doing this for a couple of years, the only way we change things, that my question before was, who sets employee pay policy? Your response was council. So you folks are illustrious leaders, or they're illustrious leaders. Do you have the tools necessary in order to find, attract, and retain the highest caliber people possible and compensate them fairly? Or do we need to relook at how we are, or do we need to relook at council policy pertaining to employee pay? That is my question. Do you need input or guidance from council in order to tweak or improve the current employee pay system to find, attract, and retain the right people, the people we need?
Mayor Coombs, Mayor of Council, Mayor Proton Bagley. We're on the right track. Again, our prior range was 83 to 117 off that midpoint. We're being more competitive between 90 and 110. So it's a work of continuous improvement, process improvement. We're making that narrower, which makes us more competitive on both ends.
Okay.
The piece that we are going to bring back to council is the piece that we talked about that we're working on in terms of how do you, you look at that space between the market midpoint and 110%, and how do you define that? And how do you really put people in that range where they may be overmarket? What are the qualifications? That's the piece that we're working on, that we're going to need to bring back to council with some recommendations in terms of how we see that. That's a piece that's remaining, and we need to spend some more time on it to make sure that that process, as I said last week, we have an equitable process across the organization that truly rewards those high performers and rewards them in a way that's meaningful in terms of what it is, that means something to them. And that's the piece that we have to work on and bring back to council. I think that's your question.
Yeah, basically, I was saying, is there anything that council needs to do, given that this section is in this budget update, to make you two more effective at what you need to do, just getting great people? And it sounds like, yes, maybe in the future we'll bring that back.
You will have to do something, and you will have to vote on a policy associated with this, but we need to spend some more time putting that together, and then we will bring that back to council. So yes, you will, but we're going to bring that back to you.
All right, just wanted to say, don't be bashful.
Thanks. We're going to bring it back.
Thanks.
Time for Senator Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My question's around the sales and use tax split between the General Fund and the Public Improvement Fund. So you made some corrections this year, which is in the right direction, in my opinion. Is there a strategy to get that back to 85.15 where it used to be, or what is your longer-term vision there from the budget office?
So councilmembers, Councilmember Moore, I think you will recall that resetting that split back to the 85.15 is part of our General Fund reset. We've pegged that number at $2.5 to $3 million in the past. And so, yes, our intent is to get that back to an 85.15 split. We've made some progress on that this year. Our hope is that in 2016, we will continue to make progress on that. I believe the information that we've given to council was that our intent was to reset the General Fund budget over a three-to-five-year period.
So the strategy is to use the budget reset process?
Correct.
Okay. Same question for the emergency reserve and stabilization reserve. What is the long-term strategy to fund that $4 to $6 million shortfall?
So we do continue to set aside funds from the General Fund one time. When we have one-time funds to be able to do that, we will continue to plug away at that and put incremental amounts into that reserve policy. I'm going to look back at Jim and see if he's got an estimated timeframe.
So Jim's coming up on the allocation on the Public Improvement Fund that you were talking about earlier. I'll go back to the capital improvement conversation that we had in terms of the needs that we're seeing, especially in terms of facility maintenance. Those needs are also driving us in terms of resetting that allocation where it was before, because we know that there's a fairly large cost coming to hit us related to capital improvements, especially associated with buildings. So there is a sense, there is a sense of urgency in us trying to move in that direction because of that issue.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, on the reserve policy, I think one thing, to give you a background, we've kind of brought this to this point, we identified this policy about three years ago, but before that, we only had like a 6% reserve. So we have been growing. I hate to refer to that as a shortfall, because we've never been to that point. This is a new target that we're starting to grow towards. We've been trying in each budget to make some progress since that time, and it all depends on how much one-time dollars are available in each budgeting process, and we've been targeting about a half a million at least each year to do that. And we only missed it, we really didn't miss it, we used it for an emergency last year. So a half a million a year, if we do a minimum of a half a million a year, it's going to take a number of years to get there, but that is kind of like our target right now.
So it's basically, if there's any money left, we can use it for reserves, or we can spend it, is that what I'm hearing? We don't, we don't actually have a way to say we are going to set this money aside next year to go into reserves.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, you can direct us to put as much in there each year as you see fit. I think what we do is we take a look at what's available. We don't know what's available until, you know, we get into that budgeting process, so, but you could certainly tell us that you'd like to see X amount go into there per year, and we'll make it a target. It competes with other one-time demands, but those are things that you see in the budget process, and you can make decisions on if you need to. If we're not getting there fast enough, we can accelerate it if that's what you see fit. We've not had a need historically ever, and with the largest emergency ever that we've ever, you know, can recall, we've never tapped this reserve. So I guess I do not feel like, you know, this is something that we have to get done ASAP. We're trying to get there in a reasonable amount of time.
All right, I guess the stabilization reserve is something that, have we ever funded that?
We only created that concept three years when we were in the middle of the economic downturn. So that was three years ago. So that would be for the next time around. So no, and the intention would be to first fund the full emergency reserve and then do the stabilization reserve.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So now we're going to go to the amendments of the land development code?
Yes, and Don Burchett will make this presentation.
Just when you thought you were done with me. All right, good evening, Mayor, members of council, Don Burchett with Land Development Services Division. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Chapter 1502, changes to the land development code that we had on a study session a few weeks ago, and we're not able to get through due to time constraints. So I snuck it on to tonight's agenda, hoping that we could get to it. So my goal tonight would be to walk you through the sections, give you a brief summary of any of the significant changes, and just a general overview of what we did in the section. If there are specific items that I talk about that you have concerns with, or you would like to provide direction, it might be helpful if you were able to give me that direction while we're in that section, so I can get good notes on changes when we get to the ordinance. And I will be as quick as I can going through these. The chapter that we're going to look at, 1502, tonight, just for those people in the audience that may not know, this really is the section of the land development code that identifies the process that people go through to get approvals for their development. It also identifies boards and commissions that are involved in the review of the development, and also roles for staff that we play in the development process and how we process those applications. So the first section that we would be talking about in Chapter 1502 is 1502-010. This is the section that talks about review bodies, and staff has reorganized this section. We have removed many duplications and redundancies that are in this section that are found in other sections of Chapter 1502. I would like to say that as the draft stands currently, we are approximately 38 pages removed out of this section of the land development code. So about a quarter of it, maybe almost a third of the section itself, will be gone. Even though the regulations, there are a few changes to them, most of it is, again, trying to make this more user-friendly, easier to understand for our citizens, our development community, and for staff. community and for staff. So again, for fifteen oh-two, that's, that's the general, is mostly just minor changes to the layout and then removing duplication. Section fifteen oh-two zero two zero, the general provisions.
Don, it looks like every body that makes a decision is there and the Board of Appeals is not listed as one of the bodies. Is there a specific reason? Because they, they're listed as one of the review and decision makers, but it wasn't listed up here. Do you reference it in BOA? Isn't that Board of Appeals? Oh, it says the Board of Adjustment, there it is, okay, got it.
Fifteen oh-two zero nine zero, general provisions. Again, we reorganized the section. We did revise the public notice requirements to reflect how staff has currently been doing this. One of the examples here is really clarifying when signs are posted on properties to make sure that it's clear that when we're doing notices for public hearings and things of that nature, that we are providing signs on properties and not at other times during, before an application is even submitted, which was one of the questions that actually came up during the Butterball trial. We are also reducing to, or we're reducing to reduce, we're recommending to reduce, the distance that we notify for development applications that are major development applications. Currently, depending on how large a development application is, we can, we go up to one thousand feet for a notice area from the property's boundary. We're proposing to keep that at seven fifty instead of a thousand. What we have in the code currently that we use, which we would propose would still allow us to reduce this to seven fifty, is that if an application is determined to affect, if we all lived in a neighborhood and Harold was going to do something to his house, instead of just doing a seven hundred and fifty notice, which would only get a few of us, we would act, we have the ability right now to say that we're going to do this whole neighborhood. So we have that ability because the potential impact is to the whole neighborhood, not just the few of us that live next to him. So we use that for larger projects and projects that we believe have a potential negative impact to the neighborhood. Right now, whether we go to a thousand feet is totally based on the number of units that are being proposed for residential use or for the size of a commercial building. And we really feel that, to say that it needs to go because we went from, we did a hundred and ninety-nine units of residential development versus two hundred, we're only going to do seven fifty, we thought that just didn't really make sense. We felt that we should have that ability to go out no matter what. And why set it at a number that's not in line with all the other development application standards? So again, it's currently a thousand for some of the application types. We are proposing to make it seven fifty, but still keep the ability for us to expand it in those cases where we believe it's necessary. The next, before we get.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is this the section that should, should we make the suggestion or should we take the suggestion of planning and zoning to require public notice to non-owner occupied occupiers?
That's a, Councilmember Finley, that's a great point. That was one of the recommendations that we, we do expect to include in the draft, which is that, one of the things that I think you've seen on some of the appeals has been that we have had renters who have said they haven't been notified because it went to the apartment owner and not to them. We are adding in a section that allows for the develop, Planning Development Services Director to actually make a determination based on the neighborhood and say, not only do we want to notify the property owners, we want to notify the occupants. So that would give additional.
You will put that in there before we have to vote on it?
Yes, yes.
Following up on, on, with some clarification, but only at the discretion of the development services manager.
That's correct. The planning, or the planning commission felt that they believe that there is the ability for staff to review and look at a project and an area of town and know that it's an area with high rental, people in there who may be impacted and not have a voice otherwise. But they didn't want to put that as a, what they saw as kind of a burden for other areas when it may be, as they see it, a more owner-occupied area that still may have a few renters in it. But they didn't want to make it a mandatory, not only are you going to do the property owners, but you're also going to have to do the renters. They wanted to make sure that it was the director's choice to add that based on the neighborhood itself.
And then, but wouldn't, if the director decides not to do that, wouldn't it still be better when I'm looking at the required notice type for the neighborhood meeting, you would get a written notice but no posted notice? And so wouldn't it be better to have both a written and a posted notice if the director does not decide to take renter, you know, send notice to renters? At least that would give, again, greater clarity in that kind of gray zone of the discretion.
I'm Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Blavoson. Again, that's why we're here tonight, is that if council believes that adding that additional step is something that you think is warranted or adding that requirement for renters to be notified at all times, that's the feedback we're after tonight. So if the majority of council would like to give us that direction, we're more than happy to take that back as we finish up the ordinance for bringing fifteen oh-two to you.
I guess the nuance that I was thinking is that in the case where the director decides not to have the required notice to renter, non-owner occupied properties, that I would propose that have the neighborhood meeting being posted would be one way of capturing the notice requirement without having, you know, a second guess, for example, by people. So I guess, I don't know if we want to do motions as we go along or how we want to do this, but I'd like to make a motion that on table fifteen point oh-two dash B on page four of the ordinance, four fifty-four of our packet, that the neighborhood meeting would be both a written and a posted notice so that no in the column would be turned to a yes.
Do you look a little puzzled?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I don't think I would require that. I think I would leave that up to the DSM, once again, reducing a burden that may not be necessary.
Councilmember Blavoson?
I guess the burden is sticking a sign in the ground. And if you're going to have a neighborhood meeting and, and the neighborhood group leader or somebody doesn't happen to get it on a neighborhood blaster that people are on, people do look at those signs and then pay attention. So I'm just curious as, you know, I can understand not requiring it being posted in the newspaper or posting the application under review, but something as simple as the neighborhood meeting, you'd want to send it to, in writing to the neighborhood, but then also posting it, it just seems like a no-brainer to post a sign. And it's not a big burden to post a sign because you're asking the applicant to post a sign when the application's under review and also for public hearing.
So again, we will, with the motion, we'll do what council would like.
Okay, I guess we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's, let's vote. Okay, it's passed the floor to you, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Santos and Councilmember Finley descending.
Okay, the, the last item in fifteen oh-two that I'd like to quickly go over is something that I think you find near and dear to your hearts is the appeal process when an application gets appealed from Planning and Zoning Commission. As you may recall, we used to give out kind of cheat sheets that would kind of walk you through the process. We're trying to refine that and get that into code so that it's clear not only for the council, but for those people that are appealing a application. So we have currently in there, we have a section that limits the presentations to no more than fifteen minutes unless council makes a motion to grant somebody longer so that hopefully we can keep people succinct. Another part of this is that, that I think is more important to understand is that currently we can get a person who doesn't just, is opposed to a development, not necessarily feels that a, an error was made, but just opposed to development, could currently appeal from Planning Commission to city council on just that they don't like a field being developed. It's not that the Planning Commission or the staff missed a step or a rule that you have adopted for the development process, but that they don't like it. They could appeal currently for that. What we are trying to do is clarify that you need to point to this section that Planning Commission or the city staff made an error on, and then the city council will make a determination of whether or not somebody messed up. That's, that's what the appeal is for and it's the same for the applicant. If Planning Commission were to deny it, they have the ability to come and say, we believe they made this error in their denial of our project. We believe we meet this requirement for the following reasons. You have the ability to decide. And then that is, any appeal whether that comes in is reviewed by the city attorney's office to make sure that they have addressed those specific items in the code for a valid appeal. They then have an ability to resubmit it if the attorneys deny it and, and make another submittal to try and capture their belief of why there was an error.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess in the, in the appeals process on page eight, the right to appeal party and interest general rule, I, I feel uncomfortable with D roman numeral four, little I, little V. So except for appeals from the final decisions made by the DSM or other administrative official, appeals may be filed only by parties and interests who shall be limited to the following. And I think it should be limited. The applicant, the owner of the subject property, any person or organization entitled under this chapter to written notice of the public hearing on the application. And roman numeral three, I'm presuming is our people within that geographical.
Correct.
Right? I don't think we should have roman numeral four, or roman numeral four. Anybody who shows up to a public meeting and basically makes comment gets the right to appeal? I don't think that, I mean, if Walmart comes into town, as much as that might be a political issue, I don't think it's a, an equitable or a legal issue. I don't think people living on the north end of town have any right to appeal a decision involving people on the south end of town. It'd be kind of like, you know, it's like the Sierra Club or the oil and gas companies coming into our oil and gas lawsuit or interveners by permission only, stay away, but out. As an attorney, I'd be real ticked off if you had political activists on the right or the left showing up to advocate for property decisions in our town. I'm speaking, not only I don't think it's good for Longmont to allow anybody and everybody to show up and have a loophole for how they can cause trouble at council, but I don't want to sit here if, if somebody shows up who's not a true party and interest under the definition of three, or under definition of roman numeral four right now, I don't want to hear from them. So that's just my thoughts. I think it's a loophole that just allows people to show up and speak and testify and cause trouble. So I'd move that we actually get rid of roman numeral four or D four unless Eugene, our city manager, manager or you yourself, Mr. Burchette, would have a reason why to keep it in. Ooh, professor, take me to school, buddy.
Mayor and council, it, it's really up to you. This is a question of how you want to define your role with regard to both the courts of Colorado and the Planning and Zoning Commission. One reason why you might want someone to have to appeal to you is so that they wouldn't be able to go to the courts until they had brought an appeal to the council. On the other hand, some people will go to court anyway. And if you don't want them clogging up your agenda, that would be a reason to say that an appeal cannot come to council.
Let Judge Mallor deal with it. That's what I say.
So this, one thing I'd say about that is that puts, if, if four were removed entirely rather than modified to say, for example, any resident of the city who testified or something like that, that puts a lot of weight on D three, any person or organization entitled to written notice. That means that when the Planning and Development Services Director is deciding whether to enlarge that notice area or to shrink that notice area, that's not only making a decision about whether they're receiving notice, but that's a final determination of whether they can appeal.
Or, okay, then I, then I would, I would say we get rid of four and then just you can change roman numeral three, any person, organization entitled under this chapter to written notice of the public hearing on, on the application, or any person who actually receives notice through the official, you know, if the DSM decides to give notice and widen it, then they would be included in number three. But I real, I don't care if they're a resident or not, if, if they're going to come in and put buildings behind my house, that's the business of the property owner, me and my neighbors, and, and that's pretty much it. Everybody else across town or outside the city, stay away and let me have my time with council and let the parties actually come in and, you know, have their, have their day in court, so to speak, without political activism. That's my, so yeah, a motion. And so I guess the motion would be, I want to get rid of number, I want to get rid of that. And then amend number three to basically expand, whatever language needs to put in so that it expands it to actual notice provided. That's the motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded by Barney. Do you want to turn your mic off so that?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Blavoson?
I guess I couldn't disagree with you more, Councilmember Bagley. I think that there are so many other decisions that are going to be made administratively that effectively having someone know what we think they should know is already compromised when minor development applications can happen and people don't even know that it's going in front of the development services manager. And other minor modifications that people may want to weigh in on. And I'm also thinking that there, there could be even more appeals when it's the discretion of the development services manager not to enlarge that area from seven hundred and fifty feet. And then people don't, receive a notice, but they think they should, or there was some wrong address or something. And then you're going to end up with even more appeals from procedural elements that I think is going to muck up the system more than just having something that, it looks like you're already tightening up what the basis of an appeal is, number one. And number two, it could be that there are community-wide issues that are community impacts that people are allowed to, to go in front of, you know, planning and zoning or not. And actually, we've seen a couple of cases where neighbors have been here, have not signed a list and have not even felt it relevant to speak at planning and zoning. And there's no, you know, I think that, that the, the idea of standing in the community on some big projects really is something that affects the entire community, not just seven hundred and fifty feet away. And I think that, I don't think we've seen a lot of abuse, number one. Number two, I don't think we're going to see a lot of abuse in the future because of tightening up of other things. However, I think that, you know, people are going to get a little bit up in arms about some of the other consolidations of administrative decisions that we're making. And I think that, that we could have a lot of trouble not leaving it in.
So we're going to talk about the administrative? Yeah, so we're on the same page here. Mayor Coombs, members of council, just so that everybody's clear, the way the code is currently written and the way that we would propose that it stay is that any minor development application, so anything that's approved at a staff. application, so anything that's approved at a staff level, is only appealable right now by the applicant, is not appealable by anybody that we notice of the application. So I just want to make sure that that's the way it currently is, and that's the way that it's, it would stay under this regulation. So if you want to have that ability for someone to appeal a site plan that staff approves and go to Planning Commission and have them hear the appeal, then we would need you to direct us to do so, because right now it does not cover that. And that was based on a number of years ago revisions made by another council that made it so only the applicant could appeal a staff-level decision. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I guess, I guess the, oh, I would argue you could disagree more. You can only disagree more, but the, but the, yeah, that's pretty funny, only Jeff could disagree more. The, but your examples, you know, standing is a legal term that refers to having the power to force this body to sit here and basically have a hearing. The changes I'm proposing don't alter all the examples you gave. You can still show up and testify. You can still show up to public invited to be heard, public, the P and Z meeting here at council. It's just that you don't have the trigger power to actually say, you know what, I'm going to go ahead and, you know, just hijack the appeals process and force council to spend time having a hearing. If I show up and I want to butt into your divorce, or I want to butt into the DA's prosecution, I can't do that. And there's a reason for it, because it wastes judicial time process, and when we are acting with our powers, it's a quasi-judicial hearing because we are acting in that capacity. And so, again, I think it's a bad idea. So looking forward to the vote. I'll shut up now.
Councilmember Levison?
I don't like the conversation we're having, and I call the question.
Okay, question's been called, so let's vote.
Voting on calling the question?
Yes, we're voting on.
I call the question?
Call the question.
Means we vote?
No, we have to vote on calling the question. Okay, let's vote on that first. Okay, that passes five to two with Councilmember Levison and Christiansen descending. So now we're going to vote on.
Motion?
Yep. Okay, that passes five to two with Councilmember Moore and Levison descending.
Okay, the next section is 1502.
Sorry, Mayor and council, not to belabor the point, but I just wanted to say that this is a work in progress. We're still working on it. The question of minor, appeals from minor and administrative decisions is a separate subsection from the appeals for major ones, and you may see changes even from what we've brought you tonight just based on ongoing City Attorney's Office review. So we can redline those changes for you, especially since council is focused on this issue.
Okay, 1502030, the review procedures. This section in general is reorganized. Again, this spells out the major minor development application types, whether or not it's a staff-level review, whether it goes to Planning Commissioner to the City Council for approval. We're proposing to add a new section that are called administrative permits, applications, and modifications. Those would be a new type of development application that staff would be able to treat almost like a permit over the counter versus going through a notification or another review that is longer. An example that I would throw out is currently if a developer is developing a residential subdivision and they want to do a show and model home in order to have a sales office, they have to come in, they have to go through the pre-application conference, we then have to give them the list of items they have to submit, we send it out through the DRC review, we get back the comments, we send them the revisions, we then generate the temporary use agreement through the City Attorney's Office, wait for them to finish it up while the applicant's making revisions, merge the two together at the end, and then we ask the mayor to sign it, he signs it, then they can have a permit to go ahead and do it. We're building a home, changing a garage into an office, or we're bringing in a temporary modular unit for them to be able to have an office on site to sell lots. It's a approved development, all the utilities are in, they just want to get going. We would like to make that a permit where they turn in their drawing, we mark it up, put conditions on it, we sign it, they sign it, we issue the permit. That's an example of what we were talking about here. Those kinds of things that we feel can be done quicker, better, without having to go through a long process. That's just one of the types that would be in this.
Sounds like a moving in the right direction to me.
Okay, 1502040, review standards for major development applications. 1502040, so.
We just had to skip over page 12 and 13.
Oh, and 13, what did I miss?
1502030, review procedures.
That's what I just did.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking about the, I was, I was, okay, all right, well, I got some questions. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, thank you. Okay, so this came up, I have already paid for my permits, it's no longer applicable to me, so I am not speaking as myself. I would like to share my story, and I want to know, as I talked, I want to know how it would apply under this. So I have a 900 square foot office building, okay, and so I pulled a permit, forget the fact that I didn't know what I was doing, but we finally got the permit, right? Found a guy who was licensed, it was all good.
All good.
But during the process, I found, so I didn't, I was just doing a remodel, so I don't have a construction background, I'm not used to dealing with this stuff, and so I found out that I actually had to get, I had to get three permits, and I'm actually saying this, I know that I've talked to you, Harold, but I want counsel to hear. So I had to pull three permits. I had to pull one permit in order to build, I had to pull another permit for the fire alarm, and then I had to pull another permit for the sprinkler system. My total budget, which I got done except for my permits and the things the city made me do, was $13,000. The permits were anywhere from, I don't know, I think about 400 bucks pop, something like that. So immediately, you know, I was planning on the one permit, but not the two additional ones, and then the fire department, I was told by the city that you have to go out and get the third parties, the fire alarm and the sprinkler company to come in and tell me if my system's in compliance. It was a remodel, it was already finished, and I had my sprinkler, and I had my fire alarms, and I was kind of at their whim and had to spend $2,800 on one and $1,800 on the other, and in the end, they only moved things like this much and said, now you're good. And I just kind of felt that the city and these contractors kind of held me hostage, and it took me like, it's still not done, I've been working on the process for like eight weeks, and I just thought, wow, I mean, this is just a 900 square foot office building, and I'm thinking, what do general contractors and other people have to go through? So my question is, in the future, okay, what can I do in order to, I mean, I see here that we're going to do like the, is this, is this new, the, let's see here, the, where did that go? I thought I just saw it. There's a little section here about, you know, a little meeting you can have with the city, and they'll tell you this is what you need to do, and that's new, right?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, so the process that you're looking at now does not pertain to building code regulations or the building permit process. So this land development process that we're talking about tonight is, does not include that. That's a separate process. So you're lost for many good reasons.
Thank you.
All of which I'm familiar with and am aware of why you're lost, and am seeking ways to help others who may follow in your footsteps.
Thank you.
So the fire marshal and the chief building official are taking a look at how we may do some upfront work with folks who may find themselves in a position where they're not sure what to do if they're trying to hire a contractor, and understanding that you have to also get a fire permit, and what does that look like? So trying to create a pre-process for owners who maybe don't have a contractor, and how to look for a licensed contractor and get the ball rolling. Our fire department will also come out and do a review with you prior to pulling permits. So that's not something that is widely advertised, but certainly one of the things that's on Michelle and Chris's list of how can we do a better job of circling back and getting people in the room before we start projects like yours?
That was my question.
So it could look something like this, but it won't be, it's not part of this codified code.
So it doesn't exist yet, but you're working on it.
Yeah, we do it frequently for people, so we do it at an ad hoc and request basis.
Oh, so you just laughed at it? Oh, I get it.
Well, we didn't laugh at you, no. And, you know, a lot of people do get lost sometimes when initially perhaps a contractor isn't licensed, or they don't understand that full process through the building code. So in the pre-app process, in the land development code, we have that down pat. In the building and fire realm, it's not down pat, but we're going to work on it. And we'll use your case as our gain.
Yeah, please.
Well, I think, I think part of the scenario, you have to work with him.
To answer part of the question is, there were some interesting circumstances around this, because at the same time, you were experiencing that, we actually met with another homeowner who is experiencing something very similar. And so what we've really found is it's in that redevelopment, remodel kind of process where there's some procedural issues that we need to deal with. And so this wasn't a one-off scene, it's in this one case, we were seeing it in different areas, and that's why we're looking at this broader perspective and asking the building official and the fire marshal to really review this, because it is something that Joni and I've had the opportunity to be involved in a few conversations on, and so that's the work they're doing. The other piece that Joni didn't talk about is the Acela program that they're getting ready to roll out. Actually, we'll do a lot to assist in that process too, because it will give not only the contractor, but even the owner, the ability to see and watch progress and see what was turned in. So there's going to be some pieces rolling out from an electronic standpoint, but then we're going to need to work on some procedural issues as well. But again, not in the land development, Carol, this is a building issue.
No, I enjoy it. We're good. Gave me time to get a drink of water, so thank you. So back to 1502040, the, again, there were some reorganization in this section, this talks about the major development applications, so this would be the annexations, the land use amendments, the rezonings. These are, for the most part, most of the things that you would see. So we tried to make sure that we clarified and updated some of the requirements for when we're doing larger rezonings, land use amendments, things like that, which I think we've already brought an amendment forward to you a few months ago to try and clarify that, but that would be incorporated into this section. One of the things that we have also done is we have combined review criteria. For those of you that aren't familiar with review criteria, we have a set of rules you have to meet. You must plant one tree, five shrubs for every 750 square feet, and then there are review criteria, which are general statements that you have to show you meet. And so these are a little more, you need to show us how you've met it with your project so that Planning Commission or City Council can make that determination that that review criteria is not. If you went through there and you were doing an application currently, you would find that a lot of those are repeated in many sections. And so in our staff reports, you will often see the same review criteria repeated in a number of different application types, and it may have the same exact answer every time. We've combined those and created a general set of standards that are applicable to all application types, and then specific review criteria that are for a specific type of application. So we believe that will also help with some of the questions that we get from the development community. One thing that we are proposing, which the council may want to think about, is currently mobile home developments are in this section, and that would be mobile home parks and mobile home subdivisions. So a mobile home park would be, I own the land, everyone here rents for me, your mobile home sits on property that I own. So think of it as a business. A mobile home subdivision is that I develop the whole property and I sell you your lot, and you bring your mobile home in, and you actually own the property and own the home itself. Okay? Currently, this is by far treated completely different than any other application type in our system. It requires two public hearings, not going back to Planning Commission twice, not just once, compared to any other type of development. And it doesn't discriminate whether or not it's for a subdivision where people would actually own the property, or if it was a business where I own the property. What we are proposing is to treat the business as a conditional use and put that into the use matrix and treat it through one public hearing, just as a business would have to go through that wants to do a bank, or a drive-through coffee shop, or a gas station. And the subdivision where we're actually creating lots for people to buy and to go ahead and put their home on, that that would be treated just as a regular development is for a regular residential developer. You have to go through a Planning Commission process one time. After that public hearing is approved, then you go through a staff-level process to finish your plan so you can start construction. That's our proposal. So it is a big change from what it currently is, but we believe that's more fair and equitable to treat everybody the same compared to how they are currently being treated.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Do you think that's why we haven't seen a new mobile home development in the city for a number of years, like 50?
Councilmember Bagley, I believe that that has had a significant impact on it. The other impact that has probably been more of a deterrent, but equally, is that we don't have any raw ground that is zoned to have mobile homes.
I think that's part of our affordable housing question, quite frankly, and anything you can do to, it's like we saw where we didn't have any apartments. We didn't have any apartments because it was too expensive to build them, and then when we made it more affordable, now we've got them. I think we need to do something similar for mobile home parks. The other thing I had on this particular section is there's a lot of question marks, a lot of, a lot of editing that needs to be done.
So, yeah, and I should have led off with that. The version, unfortunately, that I had to put in, I could have either given you the redline version, which would have been terribly hard to follow and to read. So in order to get it to that point, it shows some of the changes. For example, our lettering and numbering is off in some sections, we know that. There are some edits where things are bolded or called out with a question. In the final version, those things have been answered or reviewed. So if you have edits that you'd like to pass on to us, by all means, we'll take them, because we want to make sure this is right, but understand that in order for you to be able to read and understand and follow this, we had some of that that we couldn't get cleaned out easily, so I apologize.
Councilmember Levison?
So I'm going to assume that, like on page 20, when you're talking, you just keep citing, you know, 15.01 dot XXX. That means you guys are going to go fill in the Xs, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so I'm just curious about the mobile home park issue. I'm just wondering whether or not it's, the reason we don't have it is because builders make more money doing a normal stick construction home as opposed to, you know, a mobile home where someone can own a lot, because, you know, mobile homes don't last forever. That's the other thing, is they're, eventually, I don't think there's a mobile home that's made it on the National Historic Register of being 50 years old. So I'm just wondering whether or not the preference in the market really is that when you might not have had many builders that were building, you know, homes in large subdivision swatches, that, you know, mobile homes fit a niche need at a particular time when the building community was not able to fulfill needs, and frankly, there were people that wanted to buy a mobile home.
I think you could make the argument both ways personally, but what I would say is that currently we have no place for them to go to even know if somebody would want to do it. And I think it is an area of the market that is, you know, we see that people, you know, we've had someone retired here recently, she left and moved to an area where she could buy her mobile home. She left and moved to an area where she could buy her mobile home and live there because it was a cheaper place to live. So I think there is a need in the community for that. I think it is a valuable housing alternative for some people to use. And I think that this brings it in line to where a developer does not take a year and a half to get through a process where a regular subdivision gets through in a year. That, to me, I think makes a huge difference.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, Don, the proposal is to basically treat them, one as a business, one as development? That's the proposal?
Yes.
So moved.
I think that's the right way to go. Give a thumbs up.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to know, I might be jumping a little bit, but where does land lease and manufactured homes fit into this land use code?
So as a land lease, that would be part of the business aspect. That's the mobile home park. The modular or the manufactured home, which is typically what we see anymore, we do see some mobile homes, the single wides, think of kind of, well, I picture kind of the 1970s style that probably are in some of our homes currently, or in some of our parks currently. Those would be allowed in the parks, but they would not necessarily be allowed in a subdivision. And here's the reason why, is that the residential design standards would still apply to a mobile home. And they would have to basically meet the design standards, but a modular, a manufactured home, or any other kind of a double wide system that's brought in would be able to meet that very easily, meet our design standards. It's the harder one's going to be those single wides. So they may be restricted, that's very possible, but it doesn't mean that they couldn't be designed to meet our standard. But the problem is, is that that could raise the price for them a little bit too. But they would be allowed in the parks through a ground lease. So that's, the only other thing I want to point out in this section is the height exceptions that we sometimes see. We are proposing to create review criteria for, specifically for height exceptions. Currently, they are treated underneath the variance process.
Okay, I guess, Councilor Santos, you made a motion, and it was second, that basically that you're on the right...
I'm sorry.
...path, that we agree with the direction you're going, so I guess we need to vote on it. Are you going to vote in your own motion? Okay, that passes seven to zero.
All right. And then finally, again, the height exception, we created their own standard to grant a height exception versus using a variance criteria, which we felt gives more flexibility to the city to consider a height exception than the criteria currently do for a variance or say a setback or a problem with a lot. There may be a design of a building that either planning commission, council is reviewing, and you may look at that and believe that it's justified based on the type of use, for example. Currently under our review criteria, that's not a criteria you can use to grant that variance. So I think this provides more flexibility for the ability to grant it. It doesn't mean that they have to be granted, but it at least makes it to where they have their own specific criteria for height exceptions. Moving on then...
Councilor Anderson, do you have a question? Yeah, one more question about the, so the bold, I mean, if you go back to, just one more question on mobile homes.
Yeah.
So there's a bold section saying, page 33 or page 43, so after three years, if someone wants to do something with mobile home development, construction, manufactured home, it lapses after three years? Am I reading that correct?
You're on page 43?
483. I'm looking at bold, J.
Which is 33.
33, sorry.
So this was one of those sections, unfortunately, when the red line was turned off, it left it in. This is one of those sections that would actually be removed.
Okay, that's my question. So right now, everybody...
Oh, no, wait, no, hold on. It's been a long, long...
Basically, my question is this, and I mean, the question is, so back, we had several developers come forward and want to, you know, change the plan, and we make the comment, well, if we don't approve this, you know, the default is what is currently, was approved eight years ago, or a decade ago. So that still remains, right? Once an overall plan for a subdivision is approved, it remains in place, correct? Both for mobile home and normal folks?
Okay, so...
Not implying that mobile homes are not normal folks, I'm just saying.
So, yeah, so Dan...
You're putting yourself in trouble.
I know, slipping the tongue, it's getting late, sorry.
So Dan can correct me if I misspeak here, but the important thing to keep in mind is that there's a difference between a preliminary plot and a final plot. In the Providence example, for example, that was a final plot.
Right.
We have no way to get rid of a final plot.
For anything.
For anything, okay? Even if we vacate all of the roads and easements, they gain more property now, they just don't have access to get to the lots. Kind of like up in the mountains, there's some subdivisions like that. All right. A preliminary plot is just gone through planning, zoning commission, may have come up here to be looked at depending on the type of application it was. You've said, yep, we like it, go build it. We're giving them three years to get through the process.
On every?
On everything.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes. And whether it's a mobile home park or your subdivision, or, yes, it's three years.
So that motion we just voted on includes that, or is it that way now?
Yes, it includes that.
Perfect.
Treating it just as everything else.
All right. Good job.
Thanks.
So I just want to make sure I understand the height exceptions. This would just be for individual buildings, not for buildings across a development application?
It could be.
It could be.
So, I mean, think Amgen. You know, that was a large property where they wanted to get envelopes around the area of their property where they could exceed certain heights. And so that was looked at through the variance process to give them that. So it could apply to something like that. The mall, for example, they could have come in and said that they want a zone where they could go up to be 60 feet tall, but then everything else is going to be limited to 45 and 30. That would be a way that they could do it. Or they could come in on a building by building basis if they don't know yet that Regal wants it, but Best Buy doesn't. So it could go either way.
Okay. And for residential development, they could, you know, they could just say, it could be three stories, but if they build the ground up five feet before they get to the first story, is that, would that be included in the height exceptions?
So the residential would be treated the same way. If you own a property and you want to get a height exception, then that would be the same criteria that you would go through as well.
Okay. Great. Thanks for the clarification.
So Dan wants to add to my explanation of the lapsing, so just so that we're clear on that. So again, I was talking though about plating, and that's what I was talking about. So a subdivision plot or a mobile home plot.
Mayor and council, I just want to make sure it's clear that we're working through lapse provisions throughout for all sorts of different kinds of development applications. And just by necessity of what kind of development application it is, there are different lapse provisions that go along with it. Not all of them are identical, not all of them are three years. The other piece is the, I think a subdivision plot could, a final one even, could lapse in the very narrow circumstance that the developer does not do something they need to do in between council approval and the recording of the plot. Narrow, but just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you.
And that would be the same whether it's a mobile home plot or a subdivision, just so that, again, we're treating everybody the same. So 1505, again, we're combining review criteria. Again, this is for minor development applications reviewed by staff, getting rid of redundancies. So that's really the only thing that's going on in the minor development standpoint. Under 1502060, again, this is that new section for administrative permits where I was explaining about the sales trailer example. The other one, though, that I think you just want to make sure that you talk about or at least know about is that, actually, no, I'm sorry, that's in a different section. So again, it's just taking these smaller projects and being able to treat them as an over the counter kind of a permit review. So apologize for that. 1502070, the development agreement invested rights, which is one thing you just acted on tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just very quickly, so what in here specifies what is and is not an administrative permit process versus everything else? And one of the things that I'd be concerned about, what prevents discretionary treatment towards different developers and citizens and...
Okay.
So that always concerns me with an administrative process. I like you, so it's going to go smooth for you. I don't like you, so it's going to be a hell of a lot longer, and politics, personality, so what, those two questions. What's the difference between the administrative and the normal legally? What's the guarantee? And what safety net is there in here that it's not completely and totally arbitrary and discretionary?
So the items that are proposed to become administrative permits would be change of use. So I buy your building, you move out, I want to make it retail. I just go and I get a change of use from the building department, which currently says on, in our code, you'd have to go through our DRC process. You come in for a pre-application meeting, we review it, we send it out to everybody, we notify your neighbors, let them know that you're changing the use of your building. Three, four months later, we're done reviewing, you can go ahead and change the use of your building. That's one example. Minor modifications. I want to do an addition to my house. I need a six inch variance to be able to build my building because I live over in Old Town because everybody's house doesn't have the amount of setback that it needs, and the lots are all kind of been disjointed over the years. I come in, I present my drawing, we go through it, we review it, we make sure that there's no conflicts that we see from a fire access, any kind of things like that. As long as the proposal is within a 20% window of the standard, we can again grant that to you and let you go ahead and pull your building permit to do that deck or addition or whatever and build within the six inches into the setback. The other one again is the temporary use, the model homes that we talked about before for that residential development. Those are the things that we're proposing to clarify out of this code to make sure that people know their staff level review, they don't require going through a full DRC process.
Okay, I think it's a great idea, I just wanted to make sure that...
And then there are, as we talked about before, there are other sections under that administrator review that talks about the process and what that looks like, so. So development agreements, invested rights, again, you looked at a vested right proposal tonight to extend the vesting of that property to five years. We are combining those two sections. We're not proposing to change anything in there other than we're combining those into one section because typically you won't see one without the other. Usually you get a development agreement with a vested rights agreement. So we're just combining those together, we're not making any changes to how they're currently handled. Written code interpretations, we made some minor edits in there just to clean it up so it read better, but we're not making any changes on written code interpretations and how that works. The public and common private improvement review and construction acceptance, we actually made changes to this about five years ago. For those of you that remember, you used to have to act on public improvement agreements and you used to have to act on accepting infrastructure into the city system. You have to say that we'll take that street from the ministry developer and now we'll plow it and we'll take care of it. That took time. We made that change, again, about five years ago to where now it's all staff level. If we have a conflict, it comes to you. If there's a problem, you decide. But we're not proposing any additional changes. We dealt with that section a few years ago. 1502100, review and administration procedures.
Sorry, Don, I'd like to go back to the minor modifications from development standards. You have a whole bunch of things on, it's page 50 of the code, it's page 500 of our packet that talks about Arlopa. And so there's a lot of question marks and everything else. How does that act, affect these development standards and conditions of approval? And, because this is all, you know, big, black, bold, and I don't know what you're looking for. Is it in, is it out? I mean, what would be the religious exercises guaranteed when you're looking at, you know, like, I don't know, some minor development change?
So, you know, I might let either Dan or Eugene, whoever feels more comfortable, talk about some of the legal standpoints, but let me give you a couple of examples and maybe just a planner explanation. Arlopa is meant to guarantee rights so that people are treated fairly, whether you are Jewish, Muslim, Catholic, Christian, or any other kind of a group that have institutionalized people or people with disabilities, it is far reaching. This allows us to make sure that if somebody were to come in and challenge us on an ability for us to make a land use decision, we can go through and use this to help us to hopefully avoid a lawsuit. And there may be other reasons for it, but in my mind, this is our out in case there was a challenge on a decision that we make. And if a church were wanting to build in a location or to expand or do something that maybe is not clear in our code, there may be the need where we would use this provision to be able to grant that ability for them to go into a property that may not have been clear whether they could have or not based on that decision. And that's to make sure, again, that we're treating everybody fairly. And so I don't know if Dan or Eugene want to add additional and clarify, but that's where I think we're at.
Mayor and council, there's not much more to add. It's to help us comply with federal law where it looks like our code may conflict with it for some reason.
Did you want...
Well, I guess the follow-up question is, so if a group or a developer or a group of people were developing a plot of land for residential or for a religious institution and they required that the building be pointed in a certain direction, and it didn't seem to fit well with where the lot was, so this statute would come into play saying, you know, our religion or, you know, our philosophy, religious practice indicates that we need to orientate things this way. So that would just, you know, all bets are off about anything else, we have to honor that.
Mayor and council, that's an interesting hypothetical. I'd be happy to research that for you, but it sounds like that could be the kind of thing that this might be about.
I'm just trying to understand what would be the circumstance that, you know, that would necessitate. I mean, and there are some other aspects that other cities have dealt with as far as development of religious enclaves that I'll talk to you about offline, but I don't know if there are other things to call out this federal housing act as opposed to, you know, maybe some others that involve, you know, other discrimi- uh, discriminatory practices. I don't know if there's some others. By calling this out, are there others then that we need to add in also? But I'll, I'll talk to you about the, the one case that, um, circumstance, I think, that would, um, be a little bit difficult for us to apply.
Captain Mary Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I had another question, and I didn't bring it up before, but, um, since we're going back and forth, uh, I will do that now. Uh, under appeals from final action by the DSM on minor development applications and written code interpretations, uh, under number five and the three little i's, it says the P and Z shall hold, hold a de novo hearing on the appeal within sixty days from the close of the appeal period and may uphold, reverse, or modify the final decision being appealed. The P and Z's action on that appeal shall be final and may be appealed only to a Colorado Court of Competent Jurisdiction. Why wouldn't that be appealed to City Council instead?
Mayor Coombs, Councilwoman Finley, we could change that if you would like. Um, I, I can't think of a legal reason why we couldn't have another appeal for it to come up to you, but...
We do that frequently when they appeal a P and Z decision on anything else. We become the quasi-judicial body. I don't know why we couldn't be. It'd be a lot cheaper for someone to come to us than to have to go to a court.
So, again, I, I, I think that if you would like us to add that in, that's a, that's an easy, that's an easy add.
That would be on my electronic version. It's page four sixty-four and it's number ten on, at the bottom of the page. I, I, I move that we add counsel as the appeal after P and Z.
Yeah, I was seconded by Councilmember Christensen. Is that correct? Did you, okay. All right, let's vote on that.
Which side of the page is that?
Uh, page one hundred and forty.
It's on page...
I guess I'm off on the numbers because it says, you know, I just, I see it. Okay, now I, now I see it, okay. Thank you.
Okay, there's two people that haven't voted yet. Councilmember Finley? Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Okay, we're almost done. Fifteen oh two one hundred, uh, Review and Administration Procedures for Building and Construction Permits. Um, we are proposing to remove the grading permit requirement from the code. We currently have that falling underneath the stormwater permitting process that council adopted in another section of our, our municipal code. So it's a redundant section, so we would propose to, uh, delete that, that section. And then, under the Beneficial Use and Takings Determination, we're proposing no changes there. Under fifteen oh two one twenty, the Environmental Site Assessments, no changes were proposed into that section.
Captain Mary Finley.
Uh, I have a question. When you, um, grade your personal little property, you don't really have to get a permit for that, correct?
How big is your personal little property?
Standard little lot in Old Town, just curious for, uh, which is a hundred by fifty feet, a third of an acre or less.
So my, my, my best friend Nick's not here to, to help me here.
Okay.
My, my general understanding of, of the process is that the threshold starts at an acre.
Okay, that's what I...
And so anything that's less than that, unless you're in a subdivision that is still under construction and you buy a separate lot, you may have to do some what are called BMP's Best Management Practices.
Okay.
Or stormwater and water quality, but you don't have to get a separate permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nick's probably driving down here right now, so, um... Look at that, I'm right. Fifty cubic yards or less of one acre, so I think we're good.
Councilwoman Finley.
Um, Don, we're in this section of, uh, and it, on page seventy-three, when we're talking about, you know, appointing a hearing officer, there's like some very glaring, um, changes. It says that, um, under subsection two, Appointment of Hearing Officer, it says the Community Development Director shall do the appointment. And we haven't had a community development director in many, many moons. And also, I guess, um, can you explain a little bit about this procedure and really, because we, um, I guess it's a different kind of takings than what we had encountered through court action recently? And so can you explain how this is, uh, uh, I guess, or is this the same court action continuing?
So...
And, and did we actually follow this procedure?
Maybe, uh, I, I won't steal Dan, uh, Dance Thunder, so I'm gonna let him answer this one. This might have been like some...
Thank you, Don. So I, I hear two parts to that question. First, what is this for? And second, what happened in our recent lawsuit? So this is for, don't, you can't sue us for takings while this is in the code until you come to counsel and say, "Council, the city is taking my property, please do something about it." And this is just a process for the city to do something about it before it gets to court. What happened in the recent lawsuit was we, we went a, a very short way down the road of takings. The Colorado Oil and Gas Association sued us for a number of reasons. And one of the reasons they originally sued us for was a declaratory judgment, asking the judge to say, "A taking occurred," but not asking the judge to award damages, not as part of that claim. Oh. Butterball, there, there was no takings claim in Butterball.
Okay.
So unless there are other questions, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval to the, to the council, seven zero, uh, to agree to these, uh, changes. And so what we would hope is that you would give us direction tonight to move forward with the changes as you've made motions.
Captain Mary Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would make, uh, I would move that we generally accept these changes with the additions that we've made this evening.
Can I second that? Let's vote.
The final approval to come at the end.
That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
There's something there.
Next item on your agenda is the Attorney Compensation Review.
Oh, it's two.
Captain Mary Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, uh, I move that we actually give him a five dollar and fifty cent rate. Wait a second. Yeah, five dollars, but there's only... Fifty cents, is fifty cents? Uh, I move that we actually, uh, just give him a five thousand five hundred dollar increase, uh, to bring him up to market in his just general salary.
I'll second that. Any further discussion or... Okay, let's run on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, now it's time for, uh, let's see. Final call, public invited to be heard. Any reason public like to speak? Okay, I'll close final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Christensen.
Um, I just wanted to update everyone on what's going on with the Health and Human Services Advisory Board. Um, there, uh, they began, um, meetings, uh, there are, I believe, eight scheduled meetings. Oh, Karen's gone. And each one is four hours long and ten people are heard, so it's a very hard-working board. And, um, uh, and all of the, uh, people who are asking for money have a twenty-minute presentation. So it's, um, I just wanted everybody to know what's, that they will be appearing before us after this, uh, is completed. Thank you.
Captain Mary Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to mention a business of the week. Frontier Business Products has been in Longmont and in business for over thirty years. They sell office supplies, technology, and office furniture, and everything for your office. If you need something for your office, check out Frontier Business Products.
Captain Mary Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just wanted to give a, a brief report out on, um, the Women in Municipal Government Conference that I attended, uh, la, ended last week and through the weekend. Covered several issues, um, discussion around, uh, resolution that will be brought forth to Nationality Cities around pay equity. And, um, had some, uh, very good presentations, um, including, um, a, a talk with the Lieutenant Governor of, um, uh, New Jersey, who's a woman and, uh, was unbelievably, um, a sheriff too, not only a prosecutor but a sheriff. We also had a very interesting, um, case study scenario that was presented by a professor at University of Syracuse that ran us through a economic development scenario for a, um, you know, a, a town that was, you know, thirty thousand, that had a, you know, was in a metropolitan region with a larger town, but kind of a bedroom community, and ran us through a whole scenario with people playing different roles in the community. It was quite interesting. And, uh, I think that, um, it was interesting enough that, uh, it might be offered at Nationality Cities come, uh, the March meeting in, uh, Washington. So I would advise people, if, if this gets offered, to, uh, uh, be able to jump in on it. A couple of other things, we did get to tour the Homeland Security and Emergency Operations Center in Newark, which is one really big room with a lot of technology and, um, a lot of moving parts. It was, uh, quite interesting. It makes our Emergency Operations Center look really, really small, but they're a, a really big city. And then, uh, we got to, um, go down to Perth Amboy, which was very hard hit by Hurricane Sandy and got to see that they rebuilt very successfully. So I guess the message is that even out of the great tragedy, um, uh, people really have started pulling themselves through. It's been two years now and an amazing amount of rebuilding has gone on in sections that didn't look like there'd ever been a storm. So it was a pretty, um, uh, amazing feat, so. And, uh, we have far less distressed properties in Longmont than I saw in Newark. So, and I think our economy is doing quite a bit better than the economy in, in Newark, and, um, I'm thankful for that, but also thankful for the opportunity to, uh, learn and interact with a lot of, uh, folks from around the country. Um, I also want to, um, thank the fourth grade class from, uh, Indian Peaks Elementary School to come and, and introduce the fact that they are working with our city staff on the, um, revamp of Athlater Park. It's a really big mouthful to say. So that's a, that's about it. And I believe that copy with counsel this weekend is with Councilmember Bagley. Buy him his own loaves himself.
Well, I just want to, uh, read out two missing leafs for our electric cars this week, which is kind of exciting. So I'm excited about that. They're, I guess they had some pretty good grant money that went along with that that made it, uh, actually pretty affordable. Um, speaking of leaves, uh, if you haven't, uh, noticed, I think this year's been a really unique year for Aspen with all the cooler, uh, weather we've had, that the Aspens are absolutely spectacular. If you drive it through Rocky Mountain National Park or over to Steenbrot Springs where I was mountain biking, it was just awesome. So I'd, I'd encourage anybody that lives here to take advantage and, uh, go up to the mountains and see the Aspens this weekend. I guess that ends, uh, our comments. Anything else during comments?
Actually, one comment about the leaves. I know there's been some questions about training. Uh, we require that everyone that's going, going to drive one of those cars go through a training process. And so Maria's working with Bruce and Cash, um, to set up some times where we can get the training. More than likely, it's going to be somewhere around six o'clock on a council night, so it can be easy for everyone to accommodate in their schedules. And we will be notifying you of those opportunities.
Okay.
Captain Mary Finley.
I'm sorry, I neglected to mention that the, um, CML District Meeting's coming up next week in Arvada. And I don't know, I think I got something in the mail, but I think they, um, resent us the notice, uh, for the district dinner where they'll be presenting different, um, legislative items and it's a good way to network with, uh, people in the Denver metro, um, area in our district. So I encourage folks to go.
Any city attorneys, any comments?
No comments there.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.